Howl Township Board of Education to come to order. Roll call of the board. Mr. Gorman.
Here.
Dr. Jeffrey?
Here.
Dr. Lowe?
Present.
Mrs. Malley did advise me she would be running a little late this evening, but she should be on her way. Mrs. Mangano?
Here.
Mrs. Okerson?
Present.
Mr. Thor is on a work assignment? Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Bon Giovanni?
Present.
A quorum is present. Please rise to salute the flag and then remain standing for a rendition of the National Anthem.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now Shay Reganis for first grade from Gribbling School.
Adorable. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight Over reports we watched Were so gallantly streaming And in rockets' bright glare The bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night That our flag was still there Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave Over the land of the free And the home of the brave?
If you wait just a couple minutes, we'll have a certificate. Announcement by the President as read by the Secretary. Adequate notices of this meeting as required by Chapter 231, Public Call of 1975, were distributed on December 4th, 2019. It is now time for the recognitions. Mr. Isola?
Yes, thank you, sir, and good evening, everyone, and welcome to our December meeting. And I believe we are recognizing our youngster right? So at this time, we're recognizing our singer, Mr. Bon Giovanni and Mr. Miller. Yes? Got it? Congratulations. And I'll continue with some additional recognitions, which is always a source of pride for our school board and for our entire educational community to recognize not only our students, but our staff as well. And tonight, we'll take an opportunity to do both of those things. But we'll start with Mr. Dan Colonna, our music teacher, our band teacher at Middle School South.
Can the board please?
Yes, if the board can all come up front and assist in the recognition of these fine students. And Dan will introduce why their kids are here tonight as Allshore Intermediate Band recognition. So, Dan, that mic will flip over, or Claire will give you one, actually, if it's easier. Mr. Colonna, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Isola, and thank you for having us here tonight. About a month ago, there was the Allshore Intermediate Band Auditions in Freehold Township. And Allshore Band is comprised of schools in Monmouth County and Northern Ocean County. And there are about 150, 160 kids tried out, and they take somewhere in the area of 75 of them. In Howell, we're usually used to getting like two, three, four, maybe five or six per year. This year, we kind of topped that number with between the two middle schools. We had 13 students get in, which comprises about 16, 17 percent of the entire Allshore Band, which is very noteworthy this year. They'll be performing a concert on February 4th during the day and at night at Millstone Performing Arts Center. And the conductor this year, Mr. Chris Burnotis, is not only a retiring band director in New Jersey, but he's a very well-known composer throughout the nation. And they're going to be playing some of his pieces, and we're really looking forward to hearing the end result of all of that. So at this time, I'm going to first bring up the students from Middle School North to be honored with a certificate.
Can you just invite the administrative staff from North that's here too?
Mr. Farley, if you could come up here as well, we can give his hand, that would be great.
Okay.
The first recipient is Shelby Barkalow. Shelby, if you're here tonight, come on up. We have Sophia Tameo. And Brandon Gonzalez. From Middle School South, Dr. Henning, if you could come up for a second? Our first recipient from South is Caitlin Bonia.
walking, as we take the opportunity to recognize a few of our recent or upcoming retirees.
And Aiden Reha.
Each year, we have started a new tradition, I think this is our third year now perhaps,
Let's give these students another nice round of applause, as the entire group are representing Howl Township so well. Thank you.
All right, if we could just come up front here so we can take a photo together as where every retiree will have a brick placed in either Middle School North or Middle School one wonderful two middle schools, one community? South's memory garden, and they'll get a commemorative version of that same brick, a little desk paperweight, as recognition of their service to our district. This program has done really well. We've partnered with the Howard Township Education Foundation, as well as our partners at HDAC and HDEA, the Educational and Administrative Council. So we want to thank our partners in doing that. So this evening's retirees, it's my great pleasure to ask Ms. Napoli to come on up as we recognize our first retiree. She's not the retiree. She's going to be presenting the first one, who's right there. Is anyone from HDEA here with us? John or Eileen, are you here? Chris, come on up. Someone come up. Here we go.
Good evening, everyone. It is an honor and privilege to stand before you this evening as we recognize and celebrate In 2003, Kathy launched her 17-year career in Howell Township Schools as school office assistant at Taunton School. How wonderful for Kathy to become office assistant at the very home away from home where her three sons went to school. After five years in that role, Kathy moved to central office as secretary for the Personnel Department, where she spent the next six years. I vividly remember the exact location of Kathy's desk because it was from there that everyone was always greeted with such a welcoming smile and hello. Although I didn't know Kathy personally then, it was so nice that she always asked, "How's your mom enjoying retirement? Tell her I said hello." Of course, when I relayed her hello, my mom always had a different "How nice, Mrs. Skirbo is" story. My mom was the phys ed teacher to all three of Kathy's boys. In 2014, Kathy's Howell journey took her to Middle School North to be the office assistant there for three years before full circling back to Taunton School, home sweet home. It is my good fortune that I've worked so closely with Kathy for the past year and a half. In my new role as principal, Kathy has helped me more than she could ever know. When people say school secretaries run the school, they kid you not. Kathy Skirbo is a difference maker every single day in the lives of our almost 400 little eagles, teachers, parents, and administration. She answers the phone, greets all visitors, does attendance, sorts hundreds of notices on a daily basis, sorts the mail, answers parent questions, and about a million things more. When children get sick or fall on the playground, or when they feel sad or just need a little break from their classroom, Kathy sees them first. She decides whether to summon our school nurse, the custodian, the principal, call a parent, or an ambulance. When Mrs. Brennan, our school nurse, is at lunch, you will see Kathy in the main office, caring for about five students, that's on a good day, getting IESA Band-Aid or whatever else they need. And she never gets stressed. She handles things like a good mother would. One of the kindest people you could ever know, Kathy keeps the office afloat, always so helpful to every person who enters, regardless of how many other tasks she is juggling. Kathy will be sorely missed by the entire Howell Township community. On behalf of Taunton School and Howell Township, I wish Kathy a wonderful, relaxing retirement, enjoying her family at her home on the lake. Kathy, you truly deserve all the best.
All right, we're going to take a picture, so. Does anyone want the board in there? Sorry, sorry, sorry. Did I hear a wait, wait? I heard a wait, wait. Somebody blinked. Good? All right. Congratulations. So, Ms. Napoli, I have to confess, I fully understand your explanation of Kathy Skirbo because when I was a new assistant superintendent and found my way up to the board office, there was someone there that looked out for me as well. So Kathy, you've been part of this family for a long time. We will miss you, but you are family, so you will visit, and we look forward to seeing you. At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce to you our principal of Middle School South, Dr. Bob Henning, to take our next retiree and honor Dan Finn. Come on up, Bob.
Come on, something. Sorry, I came from a wrestling match. It wasn't that I was anticipating any problems here tonight. All right. Dan Warrie, come on up here. Dan's been a dedicated employee of Howell for 32 years, and he came to us for coming from St. Benedict's. Dan began his teaching time in Howell, teaching 7th and 8th grade science at Taunton School. That was before we had a middle school. When Howell Middle School opened up in 1994, which would become Middle School North, Dan made the move, along with many of the other 7th and 8th grade colleagues, to the new middle school. There, he taught 7th grade science. And in 1998-99, he became the AD of the school, and that was where I met Dan. He spent some quality time overseeing the in-school suspension program. But he missed the classroom, and when Middle School South opened up in September 99, he asked to move back to the classroom. And since then, he has taught 7th and 8th grade science at Middle School South. His presence at South has been invaluable and all-encompassing. He has worked tirelessly as a student council advisor, coordinating blood drives, coat drives, student faculty basketball games, and has been recognized by the Food Bank of Monmouth County for the record number of food donations that came in from Dan's coordination at Middle School South. They weigh it on a scale, not by the number, all right? Huge amount of stuff that he brings in. Besides being a steadfast role model for students, Dan is a champion for his colleagues as well. He has coordinated countless collections to raise funds for secretaries, nurses, and custodial staff. And he has always been the man behind the scenes for so many of South's past retirees, collecting and coordinating for dinners and celebrations, and also memorializing colleagues when they were lost. I have only been there four years. I met Dan when I started my career, and then I picked him up again four years ago. And it was a little odd walking into South the first day, but he was there with his hand out. He is the epitome of a gentleman. He does so much. South is a great place to work, and it's a great place to work because of the things that Dan does there behind the scenes. Your picture hangs in the faculty room, where it will remain for a long, long time. Somebody's in your chair, but you can't be replaced. Good luck in retirement, Dan.
Congratulations, Dan. Congratulations. Congratulations, Dan, an icon at Middle School South and throughout our district for many years. Dan, again, like Kathy, you too are family, and I hope to see you again around our school district. You've made a difference here, so thank you, sir. I know you will be. You're welcome. At this time, I'll ask Ms. Suarez, our principal of Land of Pines, to come up to recognize Judy Bonica. I had the great fortune of presenting Judy with her 25th-year Golden Apple presentation just last week, and it was an honor to do that, and I know Durani shares in that honor tonight, as we recognize Judy for her retirement.
So, I have been at LOP for, this is my fourth year. When I got there, I was really, really nervous. You'd think about meeting the staff, it wasn't. It was about meeting the preschoolers. But I will tell you that they have such, such great hearts, and a huge part of that is because of this woman right here. She started in the district in 1994 in Middle School North, and she was there until 2000. In 2000, she started at Newberry, and she ended up where she needed to be, where her heart is, where these babies are, where the foundation really, truly starts. And she, you have no idea how many children she has really affected, and it has been such an amazing, amazing growth and journey for me to see how important staff members are, and this one is no exception. So we did just present her Golden Apple for 25 years of service, and I don't know how I made it through that one without crying, so I don't know how I'm going to make it through this one without crying, but I'm going to try. And she told me I can't, so I can't. She has worked with Susie Kelleher for 16 years, 16 years, which is older than any of you kids that were recognized tonight. I'm just saying. But they really have a really great bond and friendship and relationship. I said they're better than Monica and Rachel, they're Thelma and Louise, and they really have a great time together. I am truly, truly bittersweet happy for you because she is going to leave us, and she is going to be with her, she's going to continue her dream job with her grandson, who was so handsome right there. Hi! And that just goes to show you. I mean, this is what she has dedicated her life to, and now she gets to retire and do it for the best child in her life possible. So I just want to thank you, Judy, for everything. The one thing that I have said over and over again is that she is always positive. She has never said a negative thing, not one negative thing about any person, any child, any day, no matter what it was, whether or not she is doing her artistic creative things, or she is taking a child to the bathroom. Every single one of those things to her is important, and it is. And if you ever had a child in our preschool program, and you were ever lucky enough to have Ms. Bonica take care of her, you are one lucky soul. So Judy, I will miss you very much. Aiden Reha, you were a preschooler? Look at that, recognized twice tonight. That's Thelma over there, Louise. And Ava. See what I mean? It's fantastic, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Take care.
Congratulations, Judy. So at this time, I'm going to ask Jimmy Rappelay to come on up, Mr. Sanisak, Mr. Farley, as we recognize one of Middle School North's staples, Milton, I believe is here. Yep, so come on up. Who's going to go first? Paul, there you go.
I'd just like to take a moment to congratulate the other retirees tonight. I did have the pleasure of working with both Kathy and Dan, and I can say it was an amazing experience, so congratulations to you. I also found out the son-in-law of our other retiree was my son's teacher, and he's an amazing teacher over there, so shout out to Mr. Rowe. Okay. But now, moving on to Milton. Milton started his career at Taunton. He went, came to Howell Middle School North in 1997, and he has been there ever since. He's always willing to go the extra mile, Milton, and he'll do whatever is necessary to make sure that our building is well-prepared for students and staff. Although during the school year, it's very busy, and often when I'm talking to Milton, I'm just calling him down quickly and asking him to do a lot of work. But in the summer, I did get a chance many times to spend some time working alongside Milton and having a chance to converse with Milton. And I can tell you, he is first class, he's a perfect gentleman, and he's really what Howell is all about. He does things to get it done, and we appreciate that. He's also known for helping his colleagues. He's also a tremendous mason. I have a sidewalk in my backyard to prove it, and not one crack, not one crack. Side business, it was a side business. Nothing, no. But in all honesty, Milton is tremendous at everything he does. I know he's looking forward to spending time with his children and his grandson in Milton. We wish you all the best in retirement, and congratulations. Come on up, Milton.
We're assuming you want this in North, right? Here's the miniature version for your.
Okay, and we have one last honoree tonight, and that is someone that I'm going to take the opportunity just to spend a second, but Mr. Farley will formally introduce Len Capari. Len has served, and if I take your lines, too bad. Len has served for 25 years in this school district. Again, I was fortunate enough just last week to present Lenny with his Golden Apple of representing 25 years of service to the Howell community. He spent every single day of that career at Middle School North. Middle School North was a place that I found myself in 2004, being appointed as its school principal. And I came from New York City, I was an administrator in New York City, and I came over to this wonderful place that I've called home now for 16 years. And Howell is a family, and it's a tight family. And for an outsider to get, like, fit in, it's kind of hard, especially with this accent. And my first few months were really, really challenging. They remain challenging 16 years later, but they were challenging for different reasons back then. And there was a gentleman there by the name of Lenny Capari, who from the second he met this outsider, considered him an insider, and did everything in his power and his way to make the team successful. Lenny Capari, I will never forget you for that. You earned my respect on the day I met you, and I am in awe of the gentleman that you are all these years later, my friend. So I say to you personally, as a colleague, congratulations as a superintendent, this district is what it is because of not only you, but people like you, Len. You are a gem, my friend. So congratulations, and now we'll see what Mr. Farley has to say.
Len does want me to keep this brief. I'll do my best. But just a couple things about Len. He did begin his career in 1978 in Irvington. He was a teacher there at the high school that he attended. He made the move to administration in Irvington, and he was a VP there four years. But as Mr. Isola just said, when Howell Middle School at the time opened, Len Capari was the vice principal, and he has been there ever since, so we're very fortunate for that. As the VP at North, he did work alongside all of the principals that were there, Mr. Dennis, Mr. Conti, Principal Isola at the time, and of course, myself. Len is known as the Gepa NJ Ask Park NJ SLA Master. And in all seriousness, that's a tremendous amount of work that he takes on, and he does a great job with it. He's been the leader of our graduation for ceremony for 25 years and watched all those eighth graders walk across the stage. He's beloved by students, both past and present. All the time, people come up to me and say, "Mr. Capari was my vice principal," and many of them are parents at our school today, and they all can't have enough, they all have many nice things to say about Len. Finally, they also mentioned how he genuinely cared about them, he helped them along the way, and I think one interesting thing about Len is that the tougher the student, the better he is with them. And those students that sometimes struggle to make good choices in middle school and And Howell is a family, and it's a tight family. And for an outsider to get, like, fit in, it's kinda hard, especially with this accent. And my first few months were really, really challenging. They remain challenging 16 years later, but they were challenging for different reasons back then. And there was a gentleman there by the name of Lenny Capari, who from the second he met this outsider, considered him an insider and did everything in his power and his way to make the team successful. Lenny Capari, I will never forget you for that. You earned my respect on the day I met you, and I am in awe of the gentleman that you are all these years later, my friend. So I say to you personally, as a colleague, congratulations as a superintendent. This district is what it is because of not only you, but people like you, Len. You are a gem, my friend. So congratulations, and now we'll see what Mr. Farley has to say.
Sorry, gentlemen. Sorry, gentlemen. So Len does want me to keep this brief. I'll do my best. But just a couple things about Len. He did begin his career in 1978 in Irvington. He was a teacher there at the high school that he attended. He made the move to administration in Irvington, and he was a VP there four years. But as Mr. Isola just said, when Howell Middle School at the time opened, Len Capari was the vice principal, and he has been there ever since, so we're very fortunate for that. As the VP at North, he did work alongside all of the principals that were there, Mr. Dennis, Mr. Conti, principal Isola at the time, and of course, myself. Len is known as the Gepa NJ Ask Park NJ SLA Master. And in all seriousness, that's a tremendous amount of work that he takes on, and he does a great job with it. He's been the leader of our graduation for ceremony for 25 years and watched all those eighth graders walk across the stage. He's beloved by students, both past and present. All the time, people come up to me and say, "Mr. Capari was my vice principal," and many of them are parents at our school today. And they all can't have enough, they all have many nice things to say about Len. Finally, they also mentioned how he genuinely cared about them, he helped them along the way. And I think one interesting thing about Len is that the tougher the student, the better he is with them. And those students that sometimes struggle to make good choices in middle school, and I think we all know a few of them, and some of them might be standing here at the podium. But, no, but in all seriousness, when those students are struggling in middle school, Len always is right with them and supports them, and those are probably the students that he forms the closest connection with. Len, you've helped me navigate so many challenging situations, and I am very fortunate to have your support. You've been a true friend, and for that, I will be forever grateful. You're a man of honor and integrity. Just to provide an example of that, these past several weeks, I'm getting texts on Saturday about the NJ SLA rosters. He has all of his observations done that didn't have to be done until February 1st. He covered all of the lunches today as we had a skip meeting, he handled everything in the building. The man is working up into the final day, and that says a lot about his character. I know I speak for everyone at Howell North and so many more. We wish you all the best in retirement. Spend time with your wife, Lori, your sons Andrew, Megan, and Matt, and of course, your granddaughter, Emma. Congratulations, Len.
No, the Howell Middle School.
That's right.
I'd like to say something. Sometimes, sometimes things just work out in terms of the circle. Custodian, vice principal, office administrator, teacher. You often have heard from this podium and, and when the district talks, we talk about family. I think that length of time that those people spent in the district showed the feeling of family there. Mr. Sanisak has often said, you know, the kids are ours from the second they get on the school bus, and I think that's true. And, and all of you who are up here tonight have, have reached out and impacted children in a different way, in a positive way, in an important way. As a district, as parents, as taxpayers, we cannot thank you enough. Thank you so much for the time you spent with this district.
That concludes the recognitions. It is now time for the board to, as the board returns to the dais, it is time for the board to go into executive session. Please note the motion printed in the agenda authorizing executive session this evening. The items on the agenda for executive session this evening will be the HIB report, a personnel item of negotiations, and the appeal of a prior HIB finding. May we have a mover and a seconder to go into executive session, Mr. President? Moved by Dr. Jeffrey, seconded by Mr. Miller. The board is in executive session.
The board and administration take their places at the dais. The board is back in session. It is now time for the minutes, sir.
Take your time.
Mover and seconder, please. On the minutes, moved by Dr. Jeffrey.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Malley. Dr. Jeffrey.
Yes.
Mrs. Malley.
Yes.
Mr. Gurman.
Yes.
On the minutes.
Yes.
Dr. Lowe.
Yes.
Mrs. Mangano.
Yes, except for five thousand and one.
This is on the minutes, ma'am.
That's, that's on the agenda.
Okay, yeah, yes.
Mrs. Okerson.
Yes.
Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Doc, Mr. Bonjavani.
Yes.
The minutes are approved, eight votes in favor, none opposed. The correspondence the board has received will be noted to the record. It is now time for the board president's comments. President of the board, Mr. Bonjavani, your comments, sir.
This is the final meeting for this particular board. Every board in January is considered a new board. So it took a few minutes just to jot down, and I mean literally, just thinking about the last year. This board has been involved with a strategic plan that happens every five years that brought together over 90 members of the community. This board has seen air conditioning go in the schools. It has seen the district become involved with the ESIP program. We have seen the Silver Certification with Distinction at the Future Ready level. We were only one of four districts statewide. Sustainability, we were at the Bronze level for all schools. We heard the results of the steam tank where our children, both at the elementary and middle school level, came in first and third with, somebody might remember the number of teams, but how many teams there were across the state that participated in that. TSA, as they always do, came back with first, second, and third place trophies, just amazing in national conferences. This board has been involved with plans to move to this facility here, and that was done in cooperation with the township management, which will afford them to give back to the community almost $1.5 million. We have seen the board, really, Mr. Isola, the superintendent, spearheaded a county-wide wellness and, and SEO symposium for parents that drew over 500 parents countywide. It's fair to say that our superintendent was the leader of that symposium happening, although he would say he had a number of people involved with them. I'll disagree. We have heard that there is the planning for the Parent Academy that will happen soon. There's planning in, in works right now for a spring version of that symposium that I just discussed, this time for educators, not for parents. We would anticipate that that would draw a large number, again, countywide. This has been a busy year. This has been a busy year for this board. I think sometimes we, because they come up little pieces at a time, it's hard to sit back and actually look at the, at the work we have done. We had retirees tonight, and I made a comment when the retirees were here, but it's worth repeating. For anybody who has done some research on, on education, on boardsmanship, you talk about proximity and distal. Proximity is those people who were there tonight who were retiring, very proximal with the, with the students, with the community. They're the ones who are with the kids every single day. It's understandable what impact they had on those students' education. The distal part is for us to realize what we have done here at this table over the last year in terms of the different things that we have worked in cooperation with administration and how we have also affected student achievement. I think we have a lot to be proud of. The other thing I want to discuss tonight just for a moment is, as everybody knows, we had the election and, and the election results, and right after the election results, Mr. Tate chose not to take his seat, so we have an anticipated vacancy that will be there in, in January. So for anybody who's sitting out there, or anybody who's watching it, let me explain how this will happen tonight. This board is going to go about its business tonight, do the business of the board. At the end of the board meeting, near the, near the end of the board meeting, we will be literally drawing names to see who goes first, but we will be hearing from all six candidates to fill that one-year position. The six candidates will be answering questions that, that we've talked about. They will be the same questions to each person. After the questions are done, and just so you know, there are six questions, same, same once each person, order to be selected right before we do that. Each candidate will then have a very short time to, to sum up and make whatever statement he or she would like to make. The board will go back into executive session again. We don't normally have two executive sessions, but the board will go back in. We'll deliberate, we'll discuss, and, and we'll talk about what we heard. We will come out and announce the person that the board has selected to fill the vacancy for a one-year position, and that person will be sworn in with the other two, with the other two successful candidates, Ms. Mangano and myself, on January 2nd. One of the things I want to make sure I say now, and I will probably repeat it later, but it's worth saying more than once. For all six of the candidates who have submitted their names, thank you for your interest in participating in, in this district. We love to know that there are people in town who want to be involved. What I would encourage, however this turns out tonight, what I would encourage is for the five people who were not selected, I would encourage you to stay involved with the district in some respect. There are a number of us sitting up here on this board tonight who started out by serving on citizen committees. In January, when this new board takes hold, when a president is chosen, the president will, will request the town to say, if anybody would like to sit on citizen, as a citizen member on committees, please submit their name, and then selections are made. And even if you are not a person appointed to a committee as a citizen member, all of our meetings, other than labor, are open up to everybody. We would love to see nothing more than a number of people, whether you're an actual member of the committee or just an interested citizen, to show up at those committee meetings, participate, be a voice, be heard, and, and start to learn the way of the board. So, so that will happen at the end of tonight's meeting. Again, I, I want to thank all six people who have put in their names for their desire to serve this community, because that's what board membership is. It is serving the community. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. It is now time for the superintendent's report. Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Isola, your report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Sanisak. And again, once again, welcome to our December meeting. I do have a few items to update our board and our community on, and I'll try to move through them as quickly as possible. This past Sunday, we had, we, the school partnered with the Education Foundation, the HDEF, at the Breakfast for Santa at Applebee's. The foundation did a wonderful job with the support of the volunteers and served over 300 pancake breakfasts. It was the largest participation by far, and it talks, I think, about the community engagement with our partnerships and, and our PTA and PTOs, and it was a wonderful day. A lot of fun was had by many of our students, and Santa did a great job. So congratulations to the foundation on another wonderful event, which will, as you all know, return dividends to our school district through the grant process that they conduct. On Monday, this upcoming Monday, on the 16th, Commissioner Repollet will once again be in district to visit with Memorial Elementary School. Memorial was a winner of a school pride program that they ran, so we're excited, as always, to have the opportunity to share the great work that's happening throughout our district, in this case Memorial, with our, with our commissioner. So we, we look forward to Monday being a really fruitful day as we spend time with our commissioner. In addition to that, there is a topic that is out there. Most recently, I've been receiving some communications from some of our parent community as well as other citizens, and that is the proposed legislative change that surrounds, I believe it is Senate Bill 2173 and Assembly 3818, of the exclusion for certain religion exemptions for vaccines in school. This is something that Trenton is looking at. It is something that is not in our control, with the exception of, you know, a point of view or an advocacy. I did refer to Mr. Sanisak, who has spoken with the advocacy chair. It'll be a conversation at your upcoming meeting. Part of the concern for the community, and just so the board has awareness to this, because we do have a small percentage of our families that do opt out for religious exemption reasons, the, the bill as posed, the amendments to the bill as posed would call for immediate exclusion of students. That could be a lot for, for school districts to, to manage. Obviously, we are an agency of the government, and we'd have to comply with state law, should that become the law. But I do think that, certainly that component, not, not to mention the entire conversation, but that component could certainly cause some complexity for school districts. So I wanted to make sure the board had awareness, as I've been, again, communicated via email and a couple phone conversations from a, certainly, at least a handful of community members. So wanted to make sure the board had awareness of that issue that was out there. Some important dates that are coming up, excuse me, on January 2nd, that's our newly noticed reorganization meeting. It'll be right here in this room. It was originally on the 7th. I wanted to once again remind our community of that change. We, as I mentioned last month, are launching our parent university, HTPS Parent U, and that will take place on January 21st from 6:00 to 8:30 at Middle School North. We put a save the date out, we'll be putting registration out, there'll be breakout sessions. Ian Hockley of Dylan's Wings of Hope will be the general session presenter. It should prove to be a really good night for our community and an opportunity for us to, you know, share knowledge in the inner workings of the school district so that we can support parents in an effort to have them be able to support their children. Finally, this just in, not finally, but this just in, Thursday, March 19th, is shaping up to be the Spring Wellness Symposium for Educators. Mr. Bonjavani highlighted the, the one that was done in the fall for parents. We're doing a like program. We are pretty all but confident, and at this point, all but sure, it will be hosted by our friends in Neptune at their pack and in, in their high school for breakout. So we're anticipating almost 1,000 educators, or up to 1,000 educators to be on hand. It should be truly something that helps move the needle when we talk about wellness and social and emotional learning. It is, once again, what I've spoken about to the board and to the community, it is a, a show of purposeful action towards helping school districts and school, and educators grapple with these, these complex issues. We do have, as always, the first meeting of each month. I take the opportunity to report school suspensions. You have that report in your packets, and there were 15 suspensions during the previous reporting period. And then finally, if you remember back, well, if you remember back for the last almost two years, 18 months for sure, at one of our previous workshops, we had a proof of concept with the logo, and I know some of you have been excited about where we are with that. We worked with one of our own parents, who was just awesome as a graphic designer, and took our proof of concept and, and put in front of us a couple different options. And I did meet with Mr. Bonjavani and Mr. Miller, as we do before each meeting, as part of our agenda review, and shared the final version. Mr. Sanisak, I believe, is gonna put that up. So ladies and gentlemen, I'm proud to put before you our, our new logo, which failed right there. There it is. Good job, Mr. Sanisak. So as you know, this captures the work that we did back two years ago with our fifth-grade students, and then the migration that that process took through a few of our retreats. And again, it is representative of the many people that make up Howell Township. It speaks to the tree being much like our original logo and how that we are rooted in that history, the knowledge that comes from the learning and, and the commitment to being lifelong learners, as well as the symbol that a tree continues to grow and blossom through a, a community that is connected and working in a common direction. So, and, and the sky, the limit with the swoosh, the blue swoosh. So I think it kinda captured it really well. I'm excited about this. I think it is a, a fine rendering and, and good depiction of the work we talked about. There was some conversation from some that the flying people that we had in the tree were a little alien-like, so we kinda backed off that a little bit. But certainly, we wanted to make sure that folks and people were represented in the new logo and, you know, with the Howell Township Public Schools highlighted underneath that. logo, and, you know, with the Howell Township Public Schools highlighted underneath that. As we move forward with this, and we start to migrate, we can use just the imprint, we can use just the, the image, we can use the image with the logo. We can begin to talk about the slogan in coming workshops, so that we can incorporate the slogan that we work so diligently on. But what we wanted to do was get this logo out. It really was a long effort, and, you know, I, I have to give kudos to all the people involved, because I think it really came out nice. So, once again, I'm very proud of the work that we do as a team, and I think this symbolic gesture of a logo is meaningful, though, you know? So, I'm really, I do think this is symbolic of the, the work and the commitment and the community that we have here in Howell Township. So, we'll start some branding with this for the new year, when the new board takes its seat. We'll have some step and repeats taken, and some let ahead and things of that nature. So, if there's no further discussion on that item, or any of the things I spoke about, my report would be concluded, sir.
I have a question on, on the logo. Will there be an opportunity for us to purchase logo merchandise?
We're going, we're going big, Dr. Jeffrey. We're going to have a store.
Good, okay.
No, I, I do believe we're going to have an opportunity to do that sooner, sooner than later. Once I unveil this tonight, I now have to get it in a embroideryable image, a JPEG or whatever that is.
Right.
And then we'll, we'll be able to start doing some of those things through some local vendors, that I think would be happy to support our, our efforts there.
Thank you.
We'll work it out.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. It is now time for the first public comment. May I, sir?
Please.
Whereas the Howell Township Board of Education determines the comments under public may last 45 minutes, and those comments will be conducted in accordance with its bylaw 0164.1, and individuals may be limited to three minutes each. The, the officer who respects the time in decorum will be the president of the board. Mr. Bonjavanti, may the floor be open?
Please.
Are there comments from the public at this time? Seeing none, may we move on? Comment be closed, sir.
Go ahead.
It is now time for committee update and liaison reports. Mr. Bonjavanti.
I'll start from my right for a change. Ms. McGannan, anything to add?
No.
Soakerson.
So, I was, I actually got to go to Adelphia for, my son was the student of the week, and it was just noticeable to me how much they do invite the parents in, and how nice of an experience it was, and it does make, make the day for the kids. So, we thought that was good. And then, it was also nice to see the support of the staff, and how many staff members you had at the Santa breakfast there. So, that was really good, too.
Dr. Jeffrey.
I just wanted to thank you for your comments. It has been a pleasure of the year for being on the board. It's nice to accomplish things.
Mr. Miller.
The Finance Committee met on December 4th. The committee reviewed a proposed budget calendar for the 2020, 2021 budget planning year. Mr. Sanisak gave an overview of the ESIP program and the energy conservation measures involved for each school. The estimated electric savings from the solar production was presented for the month of September. The estimated total savings is approximately $6,447.71. As we continue to accumulate the data, the committee will be updating. Transportation is piloting the red light cameras on two of the school buses. After the pilot program, period, if all the buses were to be outfitted, it would cost approximately $100,000. The Finance Committee in the future will be tasked to discuss how to purchase the cameras if the district goes forward with this purchase, either through grants, lease, or rolling purchase options, were discussed. Mr. Sanisak gave an update on the Howell Administration Building that we're sitting in this evening on Route 9. The demolition is approximately 90% complete. The committee reviewed the proposed budget transfers, which are on the agenda this evening, which were unanimously approved by the committee, and recommended for your approval this evening. The June 2000, the June 19th, 2019 minutes were reviewed and approved unanimously by the committee. I attended Aldridge's annual, I think it's 16th Annual Veterans Program. There was approximately 70 veterans that were recognized at the program. The students and staff, as always, did an amazing job recognizing those veterans. The Monmouth County School Boards Association held its joint meeting with the Ocean County School Board Association on December 5th at Middle School North. Thank you to the district for their great hospitality you showed to both counties. Also, thank you to Memorial School for providing two great fifth-grade students to sing the national anthem. They, they did an amazing job. I attended the New Jersey School Board Association Delegate Assembly, where Senator Sweeney was present to answer questions. He spoke about a proposal to add approximately another $50 million to special education extraordinary aid this year, well, next year. He stated their goal is to fully fund it over the next few years, which would take approximately $150 million. I also attended the New Jersey School Board Association Legislative Committee meeting as a delegate to the committee. We discussed some bills in regards to luncheon arrears. We also had a presentation about vaccines, vaping, and the upcoming U.S. census. I recommended New Jersey School Board Association staff that Ms. Malley be appointed to the Board of Directors as an alternate to the Legislative Committee. So, at the January Board of Directors meeting, she should be appointed to the Legislative Committee. So, early congratulations to Mrs. Malley. Being that the Finance Committee is a committee of our school board, that would need to be one that starts the ground running in January, no matter whoever, the chair will be picked by the incoming president. I would ask that a motion be placed this evening, that we start advertising now for citizen members for next year. And lastly, I would like to wish everyone a safe, happy, and healthy holiday season.
Comments on it? Questions?
Just with the finance report, I'm really pleased about the $6,000 with the savings. It's actually very nice. But is this the first year that we're?
Yes, that was for the.
Yeah, that's great. Very nice.
And that, that will increase as the, everything's online.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Miller made reference to the fact that one of the topics under consideration was the question of vaccinations and exemptions by parents from, from having to undergo those vaccinations. And Mr. Isola talked about that today. Again, this seems to be a, a hot topic in Trenton. I know that there's reports tomorrow, there's a, a Senate committee that's holding a public hearing on the issue. So, and I know the bill in the assembly was amended, it got out of committee and was amended on the floor, but it hasn't yet been voted out. Of course, much like this is the end of a school board year, the two-year legislative session is coming to an end shortly, within the next few weeks. And any bill that does not make it through the whole process in that timeframe has to start all over again. So, it, it is something, I guess, that we want to look at a little more closely going forward.
Yes, the, the speaker was from the New Jersey Hospital Association, and Senator Sweeney's legislative aide, I believe, Mark, I forget his last name, was present at the meeting, and this is something that's going to be fast-tracked through the lame duck, lame duck session. So, they're expecting it to pass before the next section.
So, if you don't mind saying it, then that's going to happen, and I've, I've seen that over the years, having been there. When things go fast-track, they go very quickly, and it has, would have to go very quickly now. So, you know, it's a crucial timeframe. But apparently amendments were made on one of the bills, so I don't know what might follow going forward.
Yeah, I don't know. Daniel Harris, who's Senator, Assembly Speaker Kaufman's legislative aide, was also present, and he said that a speaker is ready to, supposedly move it quickly also. So, it is something that is going to be fast-tracked. So, it's something that we really need to keep an eye on, and if we want to move in the advocacy committee, we need to really move quickly because of that.
Dr. Low.
Just, yes, it is a hot topic, and just, just look at New York, because that's been the, the hot topic for the Board of Regents, literally since last year, and particularly when schools started.
Mr. Sanisak, that motion that I asked for, do I add that into the addendum?
As has been our practice, I fully, unless there's some dissent from the board, I would be placing the ad for committees to be returned in early January.
So, it's just direction?
Yes.
Okay.
But I thought what I heard was to, to start advertising for it now, not waiting till January.
I didn't, I'm sorry if, if that's what, what I meant was, to have them returned, so we can do it in early January. I'm sorry.
So, advertising starting now.
Advertising now to, for the request to be returned, to be acted upon in early January.
Right. Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before I move on to, to Dr. Low, it's interesting. I started out my comments with the, with the achievements that, and the different things that this board has been involved with. It is the end of a, a board year, and I think I would be kind of remiss if I didn't say that if Mr. Miller did a similar chart, just for the different things he's involved with, between Monmouth County School Boards, and the Legislative Committee, and the Nominating Committee that he was part of, and all the different activities, it's, if you follow him on Twitter, it's not uncommon, almost every Saturday, every second Saturday, to see him in Trenton for something. So, thank you so much for the way you represent this board and the children of this district, and your involvement statewide, not just here, but really statewide.
Thank you.
Dr. Low.
The Education Committee meeting was canceled because of the weather, and, yeah, the weather. So, you know, the decision was, given the holiday, that, you know, we'll just resume in January. But I did attend the county meeting, and it was very, very good. I attended last year at the same time as well, the joint county meeting, and the food from our, our food service provider was also very good, I must admit. And, you know, as I said, Mark, you said it really well. We had a lot going on this year, it was a very busy year, but certainly, this is why we are hashtag HowLeads. So, happy holidays, everyone, and a healthy and prosperous new year.
Mrs. Malley.
Hi. Operations has not met since our last meeting. However, I did attend the delegate assembly, and the resolution that I did bring to the board last meeting did carry at the meeting, so that was good. Sweeney, Mr. Sweeney spoke, Senator Sweeney spoke of his plan to introduce 2% cap relief legislation. However, I believe there has been pushback from the governor. I don't believe he supports that. So, I'm not, we're not sure what's going to happen with that direction, but I guess we'll have to keep an eye on that, and legislative advocacy as well. That, the delegate assembly. I also attended the Ramtown School Veterans Day Assembly, which is always wonderful, and every year, I don't bring tissues, and he gets me every year, that Mr. Boer, he makes me cry, or Mr. Ray, although the, the ceremony is fantastic, and the participation from the kids is so heartwarming, so I just really enjoyed that. I wanted to give a shout-out to the, to the Ramtown School. And I wanted to also mention, thank you, Mr. Miller, for your recommendation to the Legislative Committee. I look forward to that next year, as long as they approve me. And I believe.
I sit on the board.
Oh, are you going to vote for me? Okay. And I believe, do we have something to talk about? Copy machines? Is that something we need to bring now?
Yes, there is a motion on the agenda this evening. The, our partner, Stewart, had proposed some upgrades. We had, it is in the budget. We had anticipated the discussion. They called very late in the, in the day with an offer, because they have their year end, they wanted to replace nine machines. Mr. Aquino looked at them, he whittled it down to six, and then, when I looked at it, we went down to four. There is a, a motion this evening. Stewart is offering a 14% discount from GSA, and then a 10% discount in the form of a rebate. So, it's almost a 25% discount from the GSA for the four machines, three of which have made over 3 million copies and are eight years old. The success of the Operations Finance Committee working together to not replace them every five years, as, as some, like, lease, turn your car in, and we definitely get the use out of the machines, and I am, after discussing it with you today, I appreciate your, your insight, and recommending that this evening, even though it did not go to committee, because time is of the essence for, to get the discount, we have to act before the end of the calendar year. They work on a calendar, not a fiscal. So, it is on the agenda this evening, and it is something that the, the schools need.
Thank you, Mr. Sanisak. Just hearing, when we spoke earlier today, when you said that they were recommending replacing nine machines, and the diligent work of Mr. Aquino, and, and you, your team whittling that down to only four, proves to me, once again, that you guys are always doing your due diligence and being financially responsible.
And as much as they are great partners, they are salesmen also.
Yes, exactly.
So, they wanted to sell nine.
So, thank you for that.
Thank you.
And that concludes my report. Besides, the fact that I'd like to wish everyone a very happy, healthy holiday season, and thank you.
Ms. Malley, as, as most of us know, I'm involved with, I've been involved with a lot of boards across the state over, over the years, and it is typically, sadly, it is typically the board who takes the brandest newest person, and says, you're going to be the person for the delegate assembly, and, and they're just sent, whether they wanted to or not. In your case, not only did you attend, but you're the one who really stepped up and asked to be part of that, and it was nice, and it was really very refreshing to make sure that you brought the motion to us ahead of time, gave us ample time to, to read it, talk about it, and, and give you some direction for having attended. So, thank you so much for your fine work on the, on the DA. Mr. Gurman.
Yes, I, Mr. Isola talked about the fine turnout we had at the Howell Township Education Foundation Breakfast with Santa last Sunday, and, again, I want to thank Mr. Isola and all the administrators, all our principals, vice principals, who come out and put all that effort in to make it a success. And, of course, the, the work and support of the HTEA throughout the years is crucial. What's really marvelous is, everybody had a good time. The other side of it is, we raised money that we use, and we've used throughout the years, to recognize the phenomenal work that our teachers and staff do in understanding what our children's needs are, what, how we can better assist them, what new initiatives we can take. So, as we all know, we come up, they come up with grants, proposals, ideas of how they can add to the curriculum and help our students even more, and then they go through the process, and they get approved, and you know the grants are only $1,000 or less, but over the years, they've made a tremendous input and effect on the, the school environment, and it's continuing, and so it's great that we could have that kind of support from the community to come out for that, as well as the Race to Educate now, which we've now changed the date from the early summer to, or late spring, to October, and I think that's going to help in fundraising there. So, that was a great event. Thank you.
Mr. Gurman, how many years has the foundation been making grants about?
Well, we started out in 2005, and I, I think we got to that, I'm trying to think it was about three or four years later, but that became our first goal. We understood this is the great strength of this district, the ability to innovate, the ability to implement, the ability to follow through, and, of course, our, our superintendent has done such a great job in our, in, in then having mentors, so we follow through, we make these things work. So, it's really been going on for quite a while.
And it's typically about 10 grants a year, isn't it?
Well, yes, and if we could raise more money, we would do more, because we, we get more applications that are really good. But yes, we've been, we, about 10 a year. So, that's piled up over the years, and, and has had a great effect. I know Mr. Isola talks about it all the time, so, and, and how's just the, and, again, the other thing we know is how some of those grants have led to other organizations putting in tens of thousands of dollars for some of these wonderful programs, that started with these smaller grants. So, like the program at Memorial, you know, that whole thing, and we have others like that. So, it's really great, and it brings new people into, from the community, into the process, to see what we're doing, how we're helping our students, and what our faculty and our administrators, what they do to make this a wonderful school district.
This community owes a large debt of thanks to the foundation for all the opportunities that they have helped provide for their children that might not have happened without their fine work and, and dedication. So, at least I'm being fair for myself, and I'm sure I'm speaking for the whole board, thank you to everybody on the foundation, and the administrators who were involved with that project. Anything else? We're good.
If that concludes, there are no discussion items listed, and it is now time for the consent agenda.
Move it.
Moved by Ms. Malley, seconded by Mr. Miller. Please note, 5,000-1 is amended. Affirm the superintendent's recommendation, as amended in executive session this evening, is a read-in to the 5,000-1. May I take that around, take the consent agenda around, sir?
Please do.
Mrs. Malley.
Yes.
Mr. Gur, I'm sorry, Mr. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Gurman.
Yes, with the following abstention, 3,000-1.
Thank you. Dr. Jeffrey.
Yes.
Dr. Low.
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Mangano.
Standing for 5,001.
Yes, on the rest, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Okerson?
Yes.
Mr. Bonjavani?
Yes, uh, recuse myself on 3,001.
The consent agenda is approved. Eight votes in favor, none opposed, with the abstent- abstentions and abstentions noted for the record. It is now time for the second public comment. May I ask, sir?
Please.
Isn't that... I went to the wrong page. Where's, no, I would not. Whereas the Board of Education recognizes that it is... Public comment may last 45 minutes and it will be conducted in quarters with this bylaws 0164.1 and each individual may be limited to three minutes each. The officer of respect to time and decorum will be the president of the board. Mr. Bonjavani, may the floor be open.
I would've swore you could've done that in your sleep.
I just did. I still haven't found it, but anyway.
[laughing]
Other comments at this time? Seeing none, may the floor be closed?
Please do.
May I ask for a brief two-minute recess while we get set up for the interviews, sir?
Please.
The administrators make their way back to the dais. It is now time for the interviews and presentations for the anticipated vacancy, which will be sworn in on January 2nd for a board seat on the Howl Township Board of Education.
For one year.
For one year, yes. Um, sir, as you directed and we discussed, I have envelopes in a basket here and are we, if we're ready, I'll pull the first one. And that is how we'll determine the order.
Please do.
I didn't know we were gonna lick 'em. Well, this is not working out.
Very hermetically sealed.
I got it. Mr. Jim Piccinic, sir? As Mr. Bonjavani, uh, had directed earlier, please introduce yourself for the record by name and address. And then Mr. Bonjavani and Mr. Miller will address questions. At the podium, sir.
Good evening. Name is, uh, Jim Piccinich. I reside at 19 Kirsten Drive in Freehold, New Jersey, which is a Howl address.
Mr. Piccinich, thank you. As I said, everybody's gonna be getting the same questions. Why do you want to be a board member?
That's a very good question and one that I was expecting. Uh, about 20 years ago, when I moved to Aberdeen from, uh, Hudson County, I always aspirated to be on a Board of Education. Uh, just didn't have the time, the financial, uh, well-being.
No.
At this point in my life, I think I'm ready to serve and, and offer my services to the community and to the board and to the, and most likely the students.
What specific attributes would you bring to the board?
Another very good question. Uh, I don't know if any of you have seen the resume that I've submitted?
We all have it.
Okay, great. One of the things that I'd like to offer is, uh, evaluation, analysis, and then also giving and offering, uh, different perspectives for providing different solutions that other people may not think, uh, or offer. Um, and that's pretty much from when I started my career at the hotel industry, through pharmaceuticals, uh, as well as my own business now. And it's to think of solutions and not be afraid of change and actually to create solutions and, and, and move forward and make things better, as I've done in my business, at a lower cost. So I try to balance between the students as well, I'd like to try to balance between the students as well as the faculty, administration, and the taxpayers, because I believe that's important for all groups to be served.
Thank you. What do you see as the role of a school board member?
This, this is my first meeting tonight and I was actually surprised on how much work you folks do. [laughing] It's something that's probably not as exciting, but something that does need to be done for the children in our town. So to answer the question, it would be somewhat of a learning experience for me, but at the same time, I can bring skills to the table to make things better.
Please describe your previous community or nonprofit experiences, including any previous involvement with Howl Township Public Schools.
Uh, there hasn't been any, uh, to date.
What areas would you like to see strengthened in our district?
Another very good question. Um, I'm a person of personal experiences through life, through different, and different challenges. And just recently, in the past year, I was diagnosed with diabetes. And one of the things I, one of the goals was to lose weight. I actually lost about 38 pounds. And in losing weight, I realized one thing. My mind works better and works faster and better. And one of the things I would like to see improved in a district, as my two children have gone through the district, is nutrition for the children. I really believe that if the, if our students have better nutrition during school and outside of school, I believe that they can perform better academically. So that's one area that I would be interested in. Um, you talk about, we, uh, we spoke about, you spoke about before about the vaccine, vaccinations in Trenton. Um, I worked for two pharmaceutical companies, Cibagagi and Novartis, so I am familiar with, uh, Big Pharma. Uh, I've also had experience with my two children with vaccines, both of them having adverse reactions. So working in Big Pharma, I kinda like what Big Pharma does to help society, but on the back end, there are children who are gonna have adverse experiences. Um, my second child had, uh, my first child had selective mutism, uh, which we believe came from one of the vaccines. Uh, and my second one, um, she had an adverse reaction to the HPV vaccine, uh, where the second shot, we almost went to the hospital. So I believe in protecting society with vaccines, but at the same time, there are gonna be exceptions to the rule for adverse reactions. So that's another area that I'm, uh, familiar with.
Are you aware of the time, training commitments, and ethic law disclosures required for school board membership?
Yes, it's very intensive, intensive as I could see and witness here.
Thank you very much. And now you'll have, do we say two or three minutes?
We, we have it set for three, sir.
We'll allow you three minutes to make any statement or any other comments you'd like to make.
As I put in my statement, um, if you're looking for someone to give a yes to everything, uh, I'm not the right candidate. If you're looking for somebody to get involved and offer different types of opinions, as well as insight, analysis, then I may be the best candidate. I do want to keep it brief because I do see, uh, that some of us are tired here, including myself, because I've been up since 4:30 this morning, working. So, uh, I appreciate the opportunity and it's been an honor, uh, to present myself to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Sanders.
Yes. The envelope, please. Price Waterhouse. Mr. John Hughes.
Good evening. My name is John Hughes. I reside at 217 Midland Boulevard in Howl, New Jersey.
Welcome.
Thank you, sir.
So, Mr. Hughes, why do you want to be a board member?
Well, I, I believe in public service first and foremost. I have a degree in political science. I went into that, uh, area because of the idea of giving back to the community. I think that giving back to the students, as a graduate of public schools, including all the way through to my law degree in public institutions, I think the public schools are the backbone of a community and, uh, I'd like to be part of that.
What specific attributes would you bring to the board?
Uh, first and foremost, compassion. Uh, I find that, uh, through my own children, that the current generation is a little different than my generation was and probably some of the other generations that sit up on the board currently. Um, I find that, uh, they are more in tune with their feelings, emotions, and diversity. And I think that is a positive. And I think we need more compassion as a community to help foster that going forward.
Okay. So what do you see the, uh, how do you, what do you see as the role of a board member?
I believe that the board members are the eyes and ears of the community, both in keeping, uh, a focus for the administration going forward and, uh, assistance to the administration in achieving the goals for the students, but also at the same time being a good steward for the public interest, especially with regards to finances, being that school board taxes make up the largest portion of all property taxes in the state of New Jersey. Uh, I think there is a ver- very much a balancing test that has to be done for a school board member. And I think that's what your role has been. And honestly, I think you've all done an amazing job with it so far. So, thank you.
Please describe your previous community or nonprofit experiences, including any previous involvement with Howl Township Public Schools.
Sure. Uh, I have, primarily my, uh, community service has been with the arts. Uh, I was a board member, uh, in charge of fundraising and sponsorships for a community theater group, uh, where I used to live in Burlington Township in Burlington City. Uh, I did that for a number of years. I'm also actively involved in, um, theater as a performer, director, and many other ways. Uh, I also have volunteered my time as a coach, um, at various different levels of athletics. Uh, I think that, uh, the extracurriculars are very important. And, uh, when I can give my time to them, I like to do so. So that's where it has primarily been. I have not been directly involved with the school, uh, extracurriculars, however. So-
What areas would you like to see strengthened in our district?
Going back to what I said about compassion in the current generation, I think that, uh, expanding on the mental health education for our children and our educators is critical. Uh, I, I know from experience with my children that, uh, bullying is rampant still. Despite the best efforts of educators and administrations, I think that further training is always going to help in that area. Uh, I think that funding towards mental health, uh, curriculum is necessary. So that would be the primary area that I would say, uh, would be what I would be championing as a, as a board member.
Are you aware of the time, training commitments, and ethic law disclosures required for school board membership?
Yes, I am.
Take three minutes. Tell us what you want to tell us.
Thank you, sir. Uh, first, I, I want to thank you all for taking some time and allowing so many of us to, uh, interview for this position. Um, I'm thrilled to see that there are five other candidates. I was worried I'd be the only one. So I think it's great that there is so much community involvement for this position. Uh, as I said, I'm a graduate of public education. I think it is the most important thing in, uh, in a community. Uh, strong schools make for strong property values. It makes for a strong economy coming up. As we all know, there are ample opportunities around for continued development of our businesses. We need to be ready to train the next wave of, uh, employees in the new areas of, uh, in, we're doing it currently with STEM, right? I mean, we're doing it with technology and engineering, and that's going to be the future for our children. And I think that the work we're putting in now towards that is amazing. I really believe that we can continue to move forward and, um, get the next group ready. So, I want to thank you for your time and, uh, hope to see you again.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Heather Ayurado. Um, I know people have problems mispronouncing my name, but it's Ayurado. And we live at 51 Berkshire Drive.
Welcome tonight.
Thank you.
So you've heard the questions. Why do you want to be a board member?
Um, I think, you know, it's a great question because we all do, um, we all applied, you know, and hopefully many of us thought that question over and over before we sent in our application. And I know the one thing that kept coming to me was, um, I'm in education through and through. I've been in it since, uh, before I graduated school. And then I was a teacher for many years, a public school teacher. I went from public school teaching to working in daycares. And now I work for the state of New Jersey, um, as an inspector, uh, for childcare centers. So I go all over the state. Um, so I've seen a lot of things in education and I would really like to be a part of this really wonderful school district that we have going. We just moved to Howl last year and, um, the big draw was the schools. I have three children. Um, two of them are in the public schools currently and one is still just a tad too young, um, but will be attending in the future. So knowing that I was drawn here for the reputation, I would love to be a part of continuing that.
Great. What specific attributes would you bring to the board?
I think one thing, um, that I'm really good at is listening. So I believe that, um, you know, I have kids in the public school. So of course I have things that I see from a parent perspective. Um, as an inspector for the state, I have to learn how to take my hat off as a parent sometimes when I'm in schools, um, and daycare centers and put on the inspector hat. So I feel like I'd be good at taking off my parent hat and putting on a Board of Education member hat to be able to really listen to other people's concerns in the district and hopefully follow through and bring to the board the general populace's concerns that we can maybe tweak and make better.
What do you see as the role of a board member?
Um, I think the previous person said it best, is really the eyes and the ears, you know, really to, um, hear the community, um, make sure that they're overseeing the superintendent and all of the, um, you know, expectations. We have all of these policies and regulations that are put down upon the state and then we try to make the best of them, but they do need to be implemented. And it's really our job to make sure that it's implemented in the best way possible and that we're managing that appropriately.
Please describe your previous community or nonprofit experiences, including any previous involvement with Howl Township Public Schools.
So like I said, I've only lived in the district for a year, but, um, in my prior district. Um, we always knew we were going to leave. That was in our settled-down district. Um, it was the first home that me and my husband had purchased and we had all three children there. So I always felt like I had one foot out the door, but I did go to all of the Board of Education meetings and I had quite a few friends that were on the board. And it was really fun to talk with them and, um, come up with and generate ideas and work with them. Um, but again, I always knew that I had one foot out the door, so I didn't want to make a commitment to a district that I wasn't committed to. Um, and now I feel like I have both feet in. We're staying here. Hopefully this is a forever home. And, um, I would love to be, you know, a part of that.
So what areas would you like to see strengthened in the district?
For me personally and my children, I don't think like that, but I definitely have seen some things, um, over the, only the one year that we've been here, that I would like to see, um, more cohesiveness amongst the schools. I have children in two different schools and eventually I'm gonna have three children in three different schools. And, um, it seems like sometimes I'm told certain things in one school and a different thing in another. Um, some schools have great communication and will have open doors and I feel like I could walk in at any time and be welcomed. Other times I feel like I'm not as welcomed in that school. So I would really like to see, um, cohesion amongst the district that way.
Okay. Are you aware of the time, training commitments, and ethic law disclosures required for school board membership?
I am, and I'm very much looking forward to the trainings.
Your three minutes.
Um, I'm really nervous, so I'm sorry.
Don't be.
Um, I've always been in education- I've always been in education. It's a passion of mine. I love to learn more. I love to hear what other people are saying. We speak to a lot of parents as we're involved in a lot of extracurricular activities with all of my boys, and I love to talk about the schools and what they're seeing and what they love and what we would like to see changed. So I'm hoping that by all of my communication with the parents in town, we can really make some, you know, great changes and work on things that are already, you know, being worked on with a great board member already in progress. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Next, Mr. Lawrence German.
Yes. Good evening.
Introduce yourself, please, and your address.
Yes, my name is Lawrence German. I live at 10 Southwest Field Road in Howell.
Great, thanks. Mr. German, why do you want to be a board member?
Well, I want to be a board member. I have been a board member. I've served actually 12 years, and I'd like to continue if I have that opportunity. Frankly, I can't think of anything more rewarding than making a difference in children's lives. Education equals opportunity, and other than through parents, the schools are the institution that can make a difference to allow young people to grow, to prosper, to learn skills, to gain passions and learn about things that interest them that they can use for the rest of their life, not just for making a living, but for enjoying themselves and finding meaning and learning how to live with other people and finding joy in that and developing their social and emotional well-being. That's first thing. Second thing is, not only is it important for the individual level, but how do we justify or explain the tremendous expenditure of funds that we as taxpayers make in paying for that? Well, I can think of no greater institution than public schools to make the difference. It's the greatest investment we could make for our nation and to give our children the opportunity to be able to go out there and compete in the world, in the economy and the like. So to me, that's really crucial, and I'd love to play a small part, however small it is, in making a difference in, in people's lives.
What specific attributes would you bring to the board?
Well, again, I think some of the other people have mentioned this too. Some of you know I like to speak, but some of you also know I love to listen. I love to learn, and anybody who's on a school board knows that there's constant learning day after day after day, whether you're dealing with finance or policy or legal things or operations or social issues, or health matters, is a constantly, an opportunity to learn and then to contribute. I think my past experiences have helped me to learn a little. Not only am I a lifelong learner, but I also was a teacher for a number of years. I taught at the graduate level, not a graduate level, I was a graduate student. I taught history for a number of years, and then I did teach full-time for five years on the college level, and that gave me a tremendous respect for what the challenges that teachers have, and that gives me, I think, an understanding of what our staff does. Also, for 41 years, I worked for the state legislature. I worked for an office called the Office of Legislative Services. It's a nonpartisan office, so I worked for all the legislators, and the role, my role in addition to the work of the other staff people, was to look at issues, to look at policies, to evaluate them, to help the legislators to look at options, problems, challenges, alternatives, get them, give them the information. I was involved in all those years in drafting bills and looking at each word and understanding what it means, and what was really exciting was watching how the various interest groups across the board came to discuss each of the bills with all the dynamism and all the concerns they have, and I think that helps me to understand things connected with, with policy. So I think those are a couple of the elements I think are important in that regard.
So what do you see as the role of a school board member?
Well, a lot of things. One, to see that our children, our students have the best possible education they can. Second of all, to be sure that we make sure that our funds, our taxpayer funds are used wisely and efficiently. Every dollar that comes from the taxpayers has to be justifiably explained and understood, and that's something, having served on the board, that I came to really appreciate. So that's very important, and that's, again, I will say, that's something that this district does so well. Also, as other people have mentioned, it's a place for there to be the nexus between the community and the schools, and the board members have that opportunity, each of them with their own perspectives and backgrounds to add to that conversation, to have the conversations with members of the community, to bring their point, different points of view to the board, and that's absolutely crucial, I believe.
Please describe your previous community or nonprofit experiences, including any previous involvement with Howell Township Public Schools.
Well, I was involved with the Howell Township Education Foundation from its start in 2005, when our superintendent at the time, Dr. Golden, was looking to build that foundation, and the board was ready to do that, and I was, I've been with that throughout the years. In the last three years as a board member, I served as the liaison to that foundation, and I did serve on that foundation board as chair for a number of years. As far as the school board is concerned, I served on the board for nine years between 1987 to 1996. I was on a number of committees, the Community Relations Committee, the Nutrition Committee. I also was on the Education Committee, Finance Committee, and Policy Committee, and for a number of years chaired the Education Committee, the Finance Committee, and the Policy Committee. Then again, three years ago, I was fortunate enough to be elected to the school board, and I've served over the last three years, two of the years I served on the Education Committee, I've served on the Policy Committee, and on the Legislative Advocacy Committee, and in this current school board year that's coming to an end, I served as chair of the Legislative Advocacy Committee and Policy Committee.
What areas would you like to see strengthened in the district?
Well, let me start first by saying this is a fantastic district, not only, and when I say that, that's not to make just me feel good or you feel good. That's because what it translates to is what it means for our children, our students. I will mention a few things rather quickly. Things that we, this district is doing so amazingly well, and I would love to see and be able to continue in following this. One, the direction of going for social and emotional wellness, and that includes physical wellness. The emphasis in the district of moving more in the direction of emphasizing kindness, empathy, resilience, resilience, mindfulness, developing the soft skills that are absolutely crucial for well-being for young people going on in the future. The soft skills of being able to follow through with an assignment, of listening to others, to be able to communicate with others well and working together. This is something, a direction that we're going, the superintendent is leading us, and we're going in that, or you're going in that direction. I'd love to see that strengthened. Another area that we've talked about the last year, which is exciting to me and to many of us, is that area of career and vocational education. We want to be all-inclusive to all our students. We excel in special education. We expel in our G and T program to meet the needs of children. We have talked about making sure that children know that there are options to do work in vocational areas, and frankly, I have some ideas that I'd love to go into that, of things that we might be doing there to go in that direction. Another area which I've never really mentioned, but I think is really important, given my background and our background, we are citizens. Half the people in this country who are eligible to vote don't vote. It's important, we just, the state just passed a new law that our middle school students must have financial literacy training. Magnificent, wonderful. What about learning about being a citizen? How do we get people involved and concerned and know how government works? Now, we do this. It's in our curriculum, but I would love to see us, and I actually have some thoughts about that, that I'd love to be involved. Again, the other area which we are so involved with in this district, which is outstanding, the whole idea of play, passion, and purpose, student empowerment, self lifelong learners. We're doing a great area, you know, work there. I would love to see a little more of what Mr. Isola is working with now with the parents, of having more collaboration between teachers and families. I'm fascinated by the policy that we have, not homework, but home learning, and how we can build that connection between parents and families and students in doing their work. And I'd also, just one other area, which again is part of our duties or has been, or certainly the board's duties, is the, to look at our results of our student body and about the articulation between our K-8 district and the regional high school district. I think that could be helpful in seeing what some of those students are doing, going beyond in later years, and see what insight they can give us in how we can improve our K-8 district. I start though, and just to end this, that we have a fantastic district. This starts with strength, and it's just a matter of being able to contribute a little more and go in these directions. You can see I like that question.
Everybody, everybody should know that nobody saw the questions ahead of time other than myself and Mr. Miller and Mr. Isola. Everybody should know that, and the board members got to see them after they were developed. I'm sorry.
Are you aware of the time, training commitments, and ethic law disclosures required for school board membership?
One word, yes.
You have three minutes.
Yeah. One area that I know we talk about is, is the whole area of community engagement and being able to do more there. Mr. Bhajavani, you talked about strategic planning. That's a five-year program. We had over 90 people involved in that. Phenomenal participation. We are, we are outstanding in having citizen members. I started as a citizen member on, on a committee before I ran for the board. I hope, again, as you say, that those of us who are not selected tonight, and it might be me too, will continue or start to get involved with those committees because they're magnificent. But with all that said and done, I have to say that we're constantly trying to do more in that area, and it's very difficult. In the three years I've served on the board now, I only saw two big turnouts over issues in three years, other than when parents came to see the wonderful things their children were doing and getting recognized. One was once on the budget hearing two years ago, and it was fantastic because there was a question-and-answer period going back and forth. Mr. Sanisak did a marvelous job in explaining it. Second was a busing issue that came up a few weeks ago, and it was magnificent that people came out, and you reported tonight about things you're doing, the board is doing about the red light, running red lights, and from those discussions, things changed. Various signs of putting, being put up, more and more awareness is there, and the issue doesn't go away. That kind of engagement's important. The real goal is to see how we can improve that interaction and to get more people involved. And to end with that, I would point out that I think it's absolutely crucial that we focus on the importance of funding public education, and that's an area where we've been challenged. Our district is, as well as many others, is getting a real hit with cutbacks, and we have to maintain our services, and I would love to see how we can build a community-wide, larger community-wide and community-based coalition to recognize public education and support it.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Sandra Prisco.
My name is Sandra Prisco. I live at 18 Mistletoe Court here in Howell.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the time and the opportunity.
Why would you like to be a board member?
I would like to be a board member. My husband and I moved into the township about two years ago. We'll actually be celebrating our two-year anniversary on New Year's Eve, and in the prior township that we lived in where we had our first two children, as one of the other candidates had said, we knew that it wasn't our forever home. My husband and I both came from backgrounds where we had to move schools a lot as children. We never had, or at least I never had, that sense of kind of community of rootedness in a specific place, and even in the short two years that I've been in Howell, the sense of community, the sense, as you said earlier, family, is instantly felt, the way that we were welcomed, both my children in the schools as well as myself in the neighborhood, in the school community. The feeling of wanting to participate in that community is something that definitely inspires me. I had my third child not long ago, and once that infant fog faded a bit, and I had a little bit of time and my brain worked again. I just kept hearing this kind of mantra that decisions are made by people who show up. I plan to be a part of this community. I plan to raise my children here for them to be a part of this community, and I would like a voice and a role in, in helping the community grow and continue its stellar reputation, which is the reason that so many of us moved here in the first place.
Great.
What specific attributes would you bring to the board?
I graduated from Rutgers School of Law, and as an attorney, I believe that I have certain skills that are, that fit right in with basically the board's role. As an attorney, you're trained to handle your client's needs, to get to the core of what really is going to address their problem, and to advocate for them within the parameters of the financial constraints that they have, of the legal parameters that you have, and I feel that that's essentially what the board does. They take the needs of the community, of the students, and you try to use your creativity and your ability to look at problems from a variety of perspectives to meet them as well as possible within the unfortunate fiscal constraints that are just the reality of the situation.
So what do you see as the role of a school board member?
Well, I see the school board in general as the, in some ways, as the gatekeeper of the community. You are entrusted with determining where taxpayer money goes, of what is the best way to use those funds, what is the most efficient way that's going to meet the needs of the most, of most of the citizens that you can. I think that the creativity that the board has used already that I've seen, as you mentioned, the solar panels and the LED lights to offset the cost of air conditioning, I think that that's tremendous, the ability to meet a need while minimizing the burden that's felt by the taxpayers, allocating, allowing those funds to be used for other things to help our students. I think that that's a key role. I think that the board is responsible for balancing really very difficult, sometimes seemingly impossible, tasks of making sure that the needs of such a, such a wide variety of students and citizens are met, that the needs of children who need to be challenged, who are excelling and need further challenging curriculums, as well as the needs of those children who are already challenged, who have special needs, that, that we can, you give services and things that encompass kind of the breadth of the rubric that students, you know, exist on.
Please describe your previous community or nonprofit experiences, including any previous involvement with Howell Township Public Schools.
I, as I said, I've only lived in Howell for a short while. In my previous district, we lived in Middletown. I was my daughter's school's representative on a townwide committee to address security fears and security issues that included law enforcement as well as administration, parents, teachers. So that was something that I was able to participate in until we moved. I am a member of both of my children's schools, PTO, as I was in Middletown, so that, I have always been involved in my children's education, and I would like to be involved on a larger scale.
So what areas would you like to see strengthened in the district?
As I mentioned, I think that the board has done a stellar job. I think that the township's school district's reputation precedes itself. I think it's one of the big boons to our community. I would like to see, I think that our children are facing a future that is very different from what even, even I was facing growing up, and certainly generations before. There was once a time where, as long as you got good grades, as long as you went to college, your future, you had a very kind of clear path, like you would be successful, things would be fine, and I don't think that's necessarily the case now. I don't think that what our children's futures are going to look like is quite as clear-cut as it was. So while I understand that a large benchmark is still standardized tests, and we need to continue to meet those in order to maintain our stellar reputation and stellar status as a school district, I think that I want to make sure that there is a focus on not just children's ability to retain and regurgitate information, but their ability for critical thinking and innovation that is going to be key to them carving their own path in a kind of unclear forest that they're going to be facing. That's certainly something that I would like to see a focus on, on a more kind of practical, not practical scale, but on a more day-to-day scale. I think that communication between the school board and the community is something that I I think is crucial. I would like to see more people at meetings. I myself, you know, would like to attend meetings more often. And I think the use of social media, of things like that, I think, for better or worse, that's where a large chunk of people now are getting their news, their information, and I think having the board be there, be present, be in people's minds, you know, parents especially, we often get overwhelmed, overworked, overtired. And as much as we're interested in some issue that may be before the board, we don't also, we don't always necessarily have the energy, the forethought, to seek out those issues, to find out when they're going to be addressed, how they're going to be addressed. And I think putting it before people in a forum that they frequently come into contact with, I think that that's a great way to get more community involvement, which I think only helps your role to have more feedback from the community, for there to be more of a linkage between the board and the community that you serve.
Are you aware of the time, training commitments, and ethic law disclosures required for school board membership?
I am, yes. And I am very lucky that I exemplify the old adage that it takes a village. I have a huge support system, so I have the time, I have the energy. I would very much like the ability to use the skills that I have, as much as I love talking to my children about Daniel Tiger. It would be, it would be excellent to, to use my time and energy towards something that, that serves them as well as their peers growing up in my community at large.
Great. Take another three minutes, talk to us.
So as I said, really the main thing that brings me here is this sense of community. I think that schools are the core of what defines us as a community, what binds us as a community. Growing up, I didn't always, my family didn't always have resources, public school was always the only option. And even after that was no longer the case, public school was still always heralded as the only option. It was the core of the community, it was, it was where you went, it was, it was the backbone of things. And that stayed with me through school, through college, through law school, publicly educated through and through. And I think it's something that, even here, moving here, you can see it's really what glues the community together. It's how parents get to know each other. You go out to, to events, to athletic events, as you mentioned, to the different veterans assemblies that, that we have. It really brings community members together, and even if you aren't a parent, you'd be hard-pressed to find a person who doesn't find joy in, in watching children and in, in seeing them grow. And they are also the next generation that, that are going to make up our community and our businesses. And to play a role in that is something that I would not only be pleased to do, but I would be honored to do. And that's why I'm here, and that's why I think that my unique abilities would really be an asset to the board, and I would love to help you in your work in the following year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Mr. William Brown.
Hi, William Brown, 17 Hampton Road in Howell, New Jersey. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening. Good evening. Why would you want to be a board member?
It's a very good question, Mr. Bonjavani. I'd like to be a board member because I want to make a difference in our community. I feel as though the board that we have now and the direction that we're going is extremely, we're doing a very good job. I think a lot of parents are happy, I think a lot of the students are happy, I think a lot of the students are, they're very educated. And I'd like to continue to do that by, you know, utilizing our technology and just different ideas from different people. And I feel like I have a lot to bring to the table with that.
What specific attributes would you bring to the board?
The specific one would be compassion, understanding. I'm very compassionate toward, towards kids, I'm understanding towards different situations and different decisions that have to be made. I'm very fiscally responsible. I was a small business owner for quite some time prior to selling, so I know all about budgets, and also with the job that I work at now. Everything's done through budgets. You know, you go out of, over budget, people aren't happy, you go under budget, and, you know, you have some money that's saved up for things like copy machines and stuff like that. I also feel as though I'm very open-minded. I feel like I'm not coming in and, you know, I have an opinion on this, or opinion on that, opinion on that. I think that I'll be able to really look at things, listen to everybody, hear everybody's opinion, and then form an opinion of myself to be able to make a decision and vote.
So what do you see as the role of a school board member?
I see the role as a school board member, basically, it's going to be the person that's going to ultimately be advocates for the parents that are out there. I think that the school boards now are a lot different than they were even 10, 15 years ago. I feel as though, you know, you really have to listen to the parents that are out there, even if it's a little issue, some, or little issues, some are big issues. And I feel like that is, you know, that's one of the biggest parts.
Please describe your previous community or nonprofit experiences, including any previous involvement with Howell Township Public Schools.
Okay, I'm a member of the community, a, a commit, a citizen member of the Community Interaction Meeting, of the community, I'm sorry, Community Interaction Committee. I've also coached football, wrestling, soccer. I have been a class parent for my kids. My wife and I are both very active in the PTA, and that's about, that's it.
What areas would you like to see strengthened in the district?
I would like to make sure that the district continues on the path that we're taking. I feel like we're always trying to make strides to be better. I don't think that we're ever settling on, you know, mediocrity. I feel like we have very high standards as a district, and I feel like with the board and Mr. Isola, I feel like we just continue to raise our standards and raise our standards and raise our standards. I feel as though that that would be a good attribute and a good direction.
Are you aware of the time, training commitments, and ethic law disclosures required for school board membership?
Yes, sir.
Great, take three minutes and tell us something else.
Okay. Well, I have two kids in the district. I've lived in Howell pretty much for my entire life. I moved here at, in seventh grade. When my wife and I had kids, we were out of district, but we had to make sure before kindergarten that we did find a house in Howell. And so far, for the past five years, we've had nothing but positive experiences. I feel the biggest thing, you know, based on our latest election, I feel that the community has spoken, based on the results. I feel the community has chosen, you know, that they wanted a regular person off the street to be part of the board. They wanted to see somebody that was just, you know, just a community member that was active within their community to take over as a position on the board, so that the residents feel as though their voices can be heard again. I feel the residents, I feel voices are heard in our township, but I think, I feel as though sometimes, you know, the community, they, they just, they want just a regular person that has kids and a wife and a mortgage and everything like that to be a board member as opposed to, you know, certain specialty people. And I feel as though that's what I'll be able to, to bring to the table, and really listen to what the residents, you know, what they're asking for. I feel as though we only really see resident outbreaks when there's situations that, you know, that call for it, like we had the busing situation, and that's really the only time that, you know, people come out to the meetings, and I think that the board did a great job. Not everybody was happy, but, you know, we tried to meet everybody in the middle. And I think that that, you know, that, that was huge. I think the integration of, you know, the separation of the schools going from kindergarten through second grade and then third grade just through sixth grade, I feel as though the community, they were kind of, they, they were shocked, it was, it was a big change. And I feel that that's why they really want somebody that's just, that has kids in this, they want kids, they want somebody that has kids in the district. And I feel as though with my experience, you know, just in life in general, with my kids and, you know, the love I have for the district, I feel as that I could make a huge, a little impact, because I feel it's a little bit, little impact on what, what the board is, is sought out to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all of the candidates. As I said before, what will happen now is the board will go into executive session. Assume we're going to be in there for a while, there's a lot of great candidates we have to discuss, talk about. We will make a decision sometime tonight, so hang in there and, and we'll be back to you soon. And with that, we need a motion to go to exec.
Thank you, sir.
Somebody want to make a motion?
Move it.
Second. Please note the motion printed in the agenda this evening. The topic for the second executive session is the deliberation on the interviews for the vacant, the anticipated vacant board seat. Thank you. The board is in executive session. Their way back to the dais, the board is back in session. Mr. Bonjavani?
Before I make an announcement, or before we have an announcement made, I want to repeat my prior comment. I'm, I'm really hopeful that, that all of the people who, who put in their candidacy stay involved in one way or another. Some of you are fairly new to the district, and, and I hope you know this, if you don't know it, all of our committees are three, three citizen members and three board members. As I said, there were a number of us on, on this dais who were citizen members of committees beforehand. And at those committee meetings, everybody has an equal voice, board members and citizen members. Because what happens at a committee is you discuss, you make suggestions, and it comes to the board for a vote. The, the committee is not the one whoever makes the decision, it always comes back to the board for a decision. So while it may not have seemed like we were back there very long to some of you, I'm going to tell you that the conversation was, was a strong conversation. Everybody, everybody's credentialed comments, opinions were weighed pretty heavily. I really want to thank everybody for having applied. Mr. Sanisak.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, we'd like to add a one, which will be appoint Mr. Lawrence Gurman to the anticipated board member vacancy to be sworn in January 2nd, 2020, for a one-year term and serve until the reorganization meeting of January 2021. If we could have a mover and a seconder, sir?
Move it.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Malley. I think that was a tie who's seconding.
Mr. Miller can have it.
That wasn't even Miller, that was Mark.
Oh, sorry. Oh, sorry.
Dr. Jeffrey?
Dr. Jeffrey, sure.
Thank you, may I take that around, sir? Mrs. Malley?
Yes.
Dr. Jeffrey?
Yes.
Dr. Low?
Yes.
Mrs. Mangano?
Yes.
Mrs. Okerson?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Bonjavani?
Yes.
Motion is approved, seven votes in favor, none opposed. Mr. Gurman will be sworn in January 2nd along with the other two candidates. Thank you all very much.
Please don't leave yet, have some conversation with us before, when the meeting's adjourned, please.
And move it.
The board is adjourned, thank you very much.